Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Why are you making that face?
God, I see you.
Okay, all right. So tonight's meeting is being video recorded, and it's also being broadcast live on the town, we hope, on the town of Pennfield's website, which is pennfield.org, the Town of Pennfield's Government Access Channel 1303, and it's also streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Excuse me, you could search Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know that it is free. If you'd like to address the board on any of the matters tonight, there's going to be specific public participation time to do that. Once the applicant is done with the presentation, we'll check to see if anybody's calling in or submitting any electronic submissions, and then we'll ask people in the audience, live audience, to come up and comment on the application if they wish. We always ask everyone to give us the name and address, just so we can put that into the record. Anyone that's viewing the hearing from home or any other location can call in with comments on 340-8771, or, as I said earlier, submit comments through the town's website, pennfield.org. We will have the applicant come up and sit at a table, one or the other, it really doesn't matter to us too much, and then the same thing, as I said, for anybody that wants to speak about the application. Every month, we like to point out that the town goes to certain lengths, and we think good lengths, to make sure that citizens in the town are well aware of what applications are being heard, so that they can make comments on them and give their input, whether, once again, it's via phone or electronic, send in a letter, send in emails, or come in person. How does the town do that? Well, many ways. One way is the town mails postcards to people that live within a certain number of feet of the subject property. Some of you tonight may have received a postcard. The town also requires the applicant to put a sign. Looks, I guess, a little bit like a for sale sign, but bigger, so when you're driving by, you can see. And the town posts the agenda on the website, on its website, and also here at the Town Hall. So I certainly encourage everybody, when you see those things, they're not really all that specific about what the matter's about, but certainly, if you have questions, there are phone numbers on those notifications, and go ahead and call, so that we're glad that you're here tonight. Tonight, we're going to start with our, as we typically do, with our work session. We're going to go through some approval of minutes and take care of any table matters that we have, and then we will go right into our public hearings. I think we did have one matter that was withdrawn.
Yes.
What number was that? Four?
Number four.
Fifty-eight.
Yeah, so for anybody here on 2157 Pennfield Road, if you are, that one has been withdrawn by the applicant, just so you know. And with all that having been said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll go right into our agenda for the work session. We have minutes from the October meeting, if I may have a motion on those.
So moved.
And we have a motion to approve by Matt and a second by Andres. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. By the way, I should point out that we do have five board members. One was not able to make it tonight, so we only have four. What that means is that any motion in order to be approved is going to have to have three votes tonight, just so you know. Okay, so we are also now going to make a motion on an application that has already actually been approved, but because it was somewhat complex, we had our counsel, Mr. Mancuso, prepare findings of fact and an actual resolution, which has been circulated. We've made some changes to it, but in terms of a formal motion to approve, I'll make it, and I'll ask you to read it into the record, the pertinent part of it that we have to today before we vote.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So the motion would be to approve the proposed resolution adopting findings and conditions of the zoning board's area and use variances for the Verizon cell tower as drafted.
I'll second.
All right, so I have made the motion to approve that resolution, and Andres has seconded. Any further discussion? Yeah, I think six or seven meetings was enough, so, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's now go to the tabled applications. The first one is 2070 Empire Boulevard. That's the RG&E application, still pending at Planning Board, and I guess at the request of the applicant to be tabled again?
Yeah, actually, I did receive an email from the applicant just late this afternoon requesting that it be continued tabled.
Okay.
Have a good night and a good holiday.
Thank you very much, John. Take care. Okay, well, I guess it's not really hurt anything to stay on the agenda, but, okay, so I'll, based upon the applicant's request, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second one is still pending as well, hasn't not, has not been withdrawn?
Not withdrawn yet, no.
Okay, also request by the applicant to table?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to table based upon the applicant's request.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, good, we're ready to go into tonight's public hearings. Now, we only have four, so maybe we have the first one there, Andy?
Sure. Eric Karen, 51 Woodfield Drive, Webster, New York, 14580, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a private athletic court batting cage with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 51 Woodfield Drive. The properties currently are formally owned by Eric Karen and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number This is application number 22Z-0053.
Okay, come on up, thanks.
How are we doing?
So far, so good. How about you?
Ah, we're doing all right, just peachy.
Good.
So, as you can tell, I put a batting cage, you know, in the house. And, I don't know, did anyone get a chance to read the letter that I submitted?
Yeah, in fact, I should have said this, I apologize for interrupting you, but typically, what we'll do here, did we, did you formally give your name and address? Go ahead and give your name and address.
Eric Karen at 51 Woodfield Drive.
Yeah, so what we typically will do here after that introduction, we'll just walk you through the application. You've submitted a very thorough application. We've read it, including the document that you were just talking about, and I don't want anyone to think that they can't say what they want to say, but it's just more efficient if we kind of walk through and just basically confirm what your request is, and then allow you to speak, of course, as much as you like, and then, as we said, phone calls, emails, and anyone in the audience. So, having said that, yes, you built a batting cage, very nice batting cage. The issue is that it's right on the setback line, so you need a 40-foot variance?
Uh, yeah.
Forty-foot variance, the setback requirement is 40 feet, you're right on the line, so you need a 40-foot variance. It's actually a, it's not a complicated application at all. There are certain factors that we have to address and that we will, and you've addressed a lot of them in the application, but there it is, there's a, there's a nice picture of it. And I believe this photo is taken, is it Sampson? What's the name?
Sampson Road.
From Sampson looking, I guess, westerly. Is that right?
That's correct.
And that's your driveway right there, right next to it?
That's correct.
Okay. So, do you have any idea how many feet there are between the, it's not, the gutter, yeah, it's not a catch basin, but the gutter and, let's say, the net? How far is that?
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet, okay. So one of the things that we should point out, when we say 40 feet, it's a setback from the right-of-way line. It's not a setback, sometimes people are like, what the heck are you talking about, Dan? It's, there are 16 feet there, but it's a setback from the right-of-way, which probably extends, I don't, well, at least 16 feet.
About 15 feet.
About 15 feet into the property, that survey will show that. So, okay, so the, just to describe the batting cage a little bit, there's a base of stone or some type of gravel. How deep is that? About five inches?
Not even.
Not even?
No, probably two or three inches.
All right, and then you have some nice astroturf pulled over that, tied over that. You run electric there for the?
No.
Oh, there's no pitching machine?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm the manual pitching machine.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, exactly.
You might have to power up your arm a little bit.
And a couple back there.
Okay, good. All right, so there's no, are there, so no lights?
No.
Okay. And then concrete footers for the poles?
So the, the, there are concrete footers, but the posts are not actually in the concrete. There's actually anchors or sleeves that are drilled into the concrete, and then the posts sit inside them.
Yep, okay. All right, very good. So there was an issue. You contacted the town, you said, hey, I want to build a batting cage. I think you spoke with Andy.
That's correct.
And everything was A-OK, go ahead. So then you build it, and then you, then we hear from the town engineer, I think it was, right, that, that there was a change in direction, shall we say, from the, from the town's perspective about whether or not this even needed a permit and hence a variance. So that happened, and we are, we are where we are because of that. I think that's probably a fair statement, there wasn't any intentional deception on your part or his part or the town. It's just, it's one of those things that happened. And then there were concerns brought to the town about the cage, and here we are.
Well, I think the, there were concerns brought prior to which caused the town to get involved initially. Okay? That, I think, is really what happened, in a nutshell, right?
Yep.
So that happened, that's why the town came back and took a look at it, and quite frankly, it didn't have the net up at that time, okay? The actual turf wasn't down at the time either. So it was gravel.
Yeah.
And that's when Andy called me, and he said, you know, we got a complaint about noise, and I was like, hmm, we haven't used it yet, so that's a little strange that you'd get a complaint about noise, but, okay. And he said, I'm, I'm out here, I'm taking a look at it, based on what I'm seeing, I don't think that there's an issue because you are not in the right-of-way. You kind of basically followed what we had previously discussed. So he said, if I, if you don't hear from me in, say, an hour, don't worry about it, you're good to go.
You heard from him.
I heard from him.
Yeah.
And he said, I was speaking to the engineer, and he said, because you put
Gravel.
A base down, it's now considered to be, I use the word impermeable, but you said it's impervious. I would think it's the same meaning, surface. So with that, he said, that's going to require some permits, and
Right.
Now we're going, now we're here.
Yeah, and the reason I brought that up is not to embarrass or point fingers at all, but it's just, I don't want anyone here to think that you just went and did something, you know, improperly. Stuff happens, honestly. Andy does a wonderful job here, he's been here for many, many years, and we all totally trust him and respect him, same thing with the town engineer.
Yeah, and I do want to note, he's helped me out through this whole process.
Absolutely, yeah. But again, I, I brought that up only because I don't want anyone to think you just sort of charged ahead on your own, that, that is not what happened. Okay. Which sometimes does happen. Oh, absolutely, it sometimes happens, yep, but not, definitely not in this case. So, in order to, let's, let's pretend you could pick up the batting cage and move it. Could, could you move that 40-foot in such that you don't need a variance? What would prevent you from doing that right now?
So if he moves it up a little bit, I have a pool in the backyard.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
So the cage is a little too long, it would hit my house, I would have to rip up that. I can't get past, I'd have to bring it up, right up to the garage, because that's the, that's where that 40 feet, eight inches actually starts. So I would have to probably put it right up against my fence where my gate is and take out the retaining walls and things like that.
Okay.
And I don't actually even think it's quite long enough. And I have like a grade that falls off, right? So if you can look behind where I have a shed back there, right, I would love to put, I would have loved to do that, right, except the back of my yard slopes like this behind that, and it doesn't really have quite enough width there, so.
And do you utilize the green space between the cage and the pool now for, for any, I mean, that's probably, you probably don't have much more green space on that side of your driveway, anyway, if you were to move that.
No. I mean, I don't know, the kids play wiffle ball over there or something like that, it's really not, it's not used. Prior to that cage being there, there was a berm pretty much right where that is, okay? And it was approximately 25 to 30 feet long, and it was a built-up area that was mulched, that had some grasses, but it had dead trees that were almost falling over, and it didn't, it didn't.
Yeah, you took care of all of it.
It didn't present well, right?
Yeah.
So I actually knocked it down and we leveled it out previous to that.
Okay, so you were on, actually, last month's agenda, and I think you asked for it to be put off, which is fine.
That's correct.
But I say that because we have received some emails, I don't know if we got any phone calls or anything, but there have been some concerns expressed, so let me just sort of go through some of them and then give you a chance to comment on them. One concern that we got is that this is an eyesore.
Mm-hmm.
It's close to the road, it's a nice-looking batting cage, but it's a batting cage.
Yep.
And it's right there. So, you know, why don't you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So initially, when I spoke to Andy, I was like, listen, I'm putting this batting cage up, I know what kind of neighborhood it is, it's nice, I don't want to be that guy, if you will.
Right.
So I was, if I'm, said, if I'm going to do it, I want to do it right, and I want it to look nice, okay? So I inquired with him about putting some arborvitae's, if you will, around the batting cage, and I actually even looked online to look at some cool ones, if you will, that would be a little bit different, and to kind of bring it around to make it so it would be hidden a little bit. And he told me that if they grow taller than three feet, they can't
Oh, it's a hedge, right? It's like a fence.
It can't be within 20 feet of the road, so.
Yeah, you need a variance for the hedges.
Yeah, so
I forgot about that.
That put me in a little bit of a conundrum regarding that, so I kind of forego that solution.
Yeah.
So it's not like I didn't look into it, I totally wanted to dress it up a little bit. In concerns of the eyesore, it is, you know, this road really basically has no homes on it, okay? There's a, there's a house directly across the street from me, so if he actually spins it, you'll see a row of trees, and I put them on my map, okay? So the house directly there cannot even see the batting cage from their house. However, they've approved, they're very good friends, they have no issues, they've got kids, okay? Right behind my, behind the home, there's a row of trees, for the most part, that go all the way across. So anyone that's on Timberline farther, there's just a row of trees, you're not seeing anything, so there's really no homes. If you, if you keep going, there's only one house, keep spinning clockwise, or it doesn't make a difference, keep going. One more, there's one house, that particular home right there would be the only house that you could kind of see the batting cage from. She has submitted an approval for the batting cage. Everyone else is far enough away where you're not going to see it from your home at all, okay? There's a home directly next to us that's behind the batting cage, that one, and it, believe it or not, it's pretty far, there's some, there's some trees in the way. However, he has signed an approval saying that he's fine with the, with the cage. And again, please understand, I asked them prior to me putting this batting cage in. This was not
All three of the folks you just
100%.
Yeah.
Actually, the, the home that was across the street is a new owner. I had asked the previous owner because it was during that time, however, the new owner has since signed as well, okay?
Well, that's good.
So I did absolutely not just
Do it.
Do a Yahoo move and do my own thing and hope everyone, you know, or not care if they agreed with it or not. I actually did ask these individuals, the ones that I knew were going to be directly affected by this. In addition to answering the other eyesore piece, if you keep going on that a little bit down the street, if you can go down Sampson, if you can go down Sampson towards Timberline.
You're going to talk about the RV that's
There's a huge RV sitting in the driveway
Yeah.
The other way.
Which is permitted.
The other way. I understand that, but we're, we're talking about
Actually, I asked Andy whether the code would allow you to park an RV where the cage is, and it wouldn't, but same point
See, right there, there's an RV right there, so you're, that, that, now that, right now, that's out.
It's covered, right?
It's covered, so it looks like a garage, basically, 24/7.
And that's, what you're looking at is permitted.
I, I understand that.
No, no, I'm just, for everybody out here, too, because I don't want, I don't want people calling this guy.
Oh, no, 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 I don't care.
Yeah.
I could care less.
I get it.
And there is an even larger RV on Woodfield Drive in the cul-de-sac that legitimately is like a 4,000-square-foot driving machine, like it's the loudest thing in history. I can't believe it doesn't take the power lines though when it goes down the street. And that thing sits in the driveway as well. So I just, I find it really strange that it's an eyesore when actually no one can actually see it from their home unless they're actually walking by or driving by.
Or driving by.
Walking or driving, I agree.
And so
And it is, and it's a drive-through. So what this is, is kind of like a connection between two neighborhoods. So you can get to Plank Road by going down my street, and you can get out to Scribner by going down Timberline, so it's kind of like a throughway, if you will.
It is busy. I guess it's, another concern might be, hey, people passing through that might be interested in the neighborhood would see that, and now they're not interested anymore. But it's, you've spoken to it enough as far as I'm concerned about that.
Just, if I can speak one more time?
Yeah, of course.
Those individuals that have driven through, when we have been out there, I, again, this is before I knew I was going to have to get all these signatures and things like that, I had at least 100 to 200 people stop their cars and say, or when they're walking, or say, that is like the coolest thing I've ever seen, I wish I had that when I was a kid, so.
Yep, I, I got you.
Okay.
So let me, let me go to another, I guess, concern that we've heard about, and have you address that, and that is noise. So tell me why you think this is, this, the batting cage operation won't be a detriment to the neighborhood because of noise.
Okay, so prior to this cage being erected, and I still have one, we have a hitting net, okay? So it's a seven-by-seven-foot hitting net with a T, and for the first four years, my kids and neighborhood kids would be over hitting balls into the net, which is the exact same noise as what the batting cage provides, right? So there really is no difference between the noises. However, if we're going to talk about noise, a lawnmower is a lot louder than the batting cage. The, a basketball bouncing is a lot more frequent than a hit that ball. When we don't utilize this, I didn't, I didn't light it, so it is not being done after hours, and if it is done a little earlier in the day, I mean, trust me, my kids don't get up, but if they do have to get up, we make them use a wood bat at that particular, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been around baseball, I know that there's some noise that, that is involved, but, you know, we're pretty cognizant of being respectful of people, so we absolutely employ a wood bat only at the, at particular hours. During this time of year, there are leaf blowers 24/7 that are way louder, that you can't speak, have a conversation through, you can absolutely have a conversation through batting practice all day. This is just a million other noises that are a lot louder in our neighborhood than the batting cage.
Right, okay. You actually did have a neighbor that submitted something, sort of a, I don't know if the person's here tonight or not, but let's call it an analysis of noise referencing other items.
Correct.
You spoke with him?
Yeah.
Or communicated with him, talked about, and then he withdrew any complaint
That's correct.
That he had. I forget the gentleman's name, but that's, his submission and his retraction of his opposition is all part of the record as well. So it's another good thing that you did, you, there was a concern expressed, and you addressed that as well. Now, I'll get into it in a little bit, but I think another way to address a noise concern, you've already sort of alluded to it, and that is set certain hours. So we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute. Another concern that has been expressed is, and you could see a little bit of it there, is cars parking
Yep.
In the road. That is, that is a turn there, and I know there's the either detention or retention pond that, I don't think people are supposed to park there. I don't know if, if you checked that out today or not, but, and then they fish. I live on the other side of Plank, so I mean, I'm, I'm here through, and I've seen people parking there and fishing there, and, you know, fishing is fun, I guess, so they want to do that.
Correct.
But, you know, what can we do to alleviate any concerns about cars parking on the street and just making it more difficult to drive through that area? Because it is, it's a pretty busy, you've sort of said it, I, I don't know that people use it through as a cut-through.
No, it's just, it's a way to get to their home, right? Through, you know, from Plank to the, correct.
It's busy, go ahead, so
So those cars right there aren't even mine, right?
Okay.
So they're from the neighbors, they were doing work on the house, so it's, people park there, you know, consistently. I just find it to be a little strange that people are having an issue with people parking. I have parties at my house, I mean, I just, there's, there's a party in our neighborhood almost every day in the summer, not necessarily at my house, but my wife's a teacher, so she pretty much has a party every day, right, at, at the house, you know, while I'm at work.
Yeah.
However, we have a ton of people that are constantly over. There's no difference, okay? If, I'm saying, I had no one ever complain about people coming over my house for the first five years until I put a batting cage up. And again, as you alluded to a little earlier, the pond attracts a ton of people fishing that do not live in the neighborhood, okay?
Yeah.
There are no less than 20 cars every single day lining in front of my house.
Using the pond.
Using the pond
Okay.
To fish, and I don't have a problem. Not, not once have I called the town saying, hey, there's all these people. You know, the only thing that's a little annoying is there is trash that gets left behind, because, you know, we have people like ordering food to our residents, right, because they need a residence, and they order their Uber Eats, right? And I don't care, right? I'm not that guy, I get it, you want to fish and you're hungry, that's okay, you've been there for two hours, I don't care. All I ask is that you pick it up. Well, you know, there are some neighbors here that also help pick that up, right? So we continuously have to do that. In terms of a safety concern, there are trees that are in that, in the, in the corner of my lot, they're tall. When I moved in, they were, they were pretty far down, it was, it was pretty overgrown, so I umbrellaed them up quite a bit and continue to do so, so that people can see through when you're making a turn, because they were all the way down, and I thought that was extremely dangerous, because it was blind, it was a blind turn. it was blind, it was a blind turn. And people do, like you said, move a little bit quicker through there. We actually put some signs up and stuff. But I've, you know, cut those up so that you could see through it. So, for, in terms of a safety kind of a situation, I'm totally cognizant of that. I'm not looking for people to park directly on the corner or anything like that. If they are, they're down by the batting cage. So, I'm not really, I'm still not understanding the, the issue because I've had people park at my house, you know.
Let me give you a real-life example that you might be familiar with.
Yes, sir.
How long you been there?
Five years.
Okay, well, then maybe, maybe not. But Yorktown, you know where Yorktown is?
Yes, I do.
So, do you remember the, the guy that used to put up the Christmas decorations?
I do. He used to take my kids there, yeah.
It was fantastic.
Correct.
But I can't tell you how many times I turned down that street to get to my house and said, what the heck did I just do? Because there were traffic jams.
Correct.
So, that's the sort of thing that I would say, you know, let's say you have five cars using the pond, somebody down the street's having a party, you got people parking their pickups because they're doing work on a house. What can, what can we do? Because you're here asking for variance.
Yeah.
So, what can we do to make sure that the batting cage, the variance, doesn't contribute to a problem that may be there? A, a thought that I have is any cars coming to your property to you that are going to stay while the batting cage is being used, can, how many can fit in your driveway?
I can probably get nine cars in my driveway.
So, do you anticipate any more than nine cars transporting kids for the most part that are going to stay? And if, and if the answer's no, would you, would you agree to a condition of approval that, that cars have to park in your driveway?
Yeah, I just, I think, I think there's been some confusion, though, on some of the, on, on a complaint, thinking that I had people over the house hitting when I was actually having a family party, which I have a ton of, you know, nephews and stuff like that, that use the cage when they're at the party. I have a large family.
Sure.
So, we have 30, 40 people over sometimes. You know, I think they're thinking I'm having a batting practice as opposed to just having people over my house.
That's what I'm talking about. If people are coming over to, to practice.
Okay, yeah.
I guess what I would ask you is to, to consider saying, you got to park in my driveway.
Fair enough.
If you're having a party, a family, let's go play bocce, let's go play frisbee, oh, let's go hit some baseballs. That's different. But I, I see, and I would think you would want this batting cage to be used pretty much every day during nice weather. How many times are you going to have six, eight, 10 cars there because of it? I don't know. Probably not all that many. So, all I'm saying and suggesting is that as a condition of approval, if, if a car's going to stay there for practice, that it park in the driveway. That, that would mean, if that's done, that the batting cage, the variance, would not be contributing to any parking problems that may be out. To me, that's sort of, that problem's solved, and it's no longer a concern, at least from where I'm sitting. You know, folks here can chime in on that as well. So, you said safety. I, I just want to make sure that everybody here knows that the town engineer has reviewed it and concluded that there aren't any safety concerns with the location of the cage as it is in terms of sight distance for cars or, you know, there aren't sidewalks there. But it's not so close that it's going to interfere with any pedestrian, pedestrian traffic. So, in that sense, there aren't any safety concerns. You can obviously see through the net, so that's not a, that's not a problem either. But again, I wanted folks to know that the town engineer has looked at it for that reason. Before I continue, let me just remind people that if they have a comment, they can call 340-8771, and they'll just be put on hold until their turn is up, or submit comments at penfield.org. So, I just have a couple more thoughts and comments, and then I'll ask my fellow board members to chime in if they want. What I'm, what I'm thinking here, we've already talked a little bit about it, limiting the hours of use. What would be a reasonable condition of approval to impose that would limit the hours of use? To address the, the noise and the potential traffic, all that stuff. And also, is it also reasonable to ask or to impose a condition that puts a seasonal limit on it? I, I imagine you're not going to be using this cage in February. Not to be a smartass, but, right?
I agree, yeah.
So, what do you care if there's a condition of approval that says you can't use it in February or January? Now, maybe you do care if we say you can't use it in April.
I'd probably care that, yeah.
Spring, spring training.
Yeah.
All right? So, to me, the sort of parameters of a baseball season, you know, from April to October, we did have a nice November. Somebody, I'm sure, pointed that out. But that's another thing that I would suggest we consider as a condition of approval is limiting the hours. Not that, I don't have any problem with seven days a week, but the hours and then limiting the season as well, in some reasonable manner. No commercial use of this, of course. I think you wouldn't have any problem with that, even though I think you did point out how difficult it is to get batting cages nowadays, and I agree with that. And then, can, can you estimate how much it would cost you to, you know, move it as we discussed earlier? Even if you didn't, you were able to move it back 40 feet or, or 10 feet or 12 feet, what would, what would that cost you to, to do that? Ballpark figure?
$5,000, maybe?
Okay. All right. So, it's not insignificant. Let's, let's put it that way.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And I, and I, I did note some of your submissions about the difference between wood and metal, and we can talk about that regarding the hours as well, because that makes, that makes sense to me as well. So, I guess I'll turn to my fellow board members and ask if they have any other questions or comments. I'm kind of hogged the time a little bit, but-
Yeah, seriously.
Yeah, you covered my questions, Dan.
Okay.
That's the, the only one thing I would say is in terms of maintenance and upkeep. If we can put, you know, if we discussed, you know, I know, if there was a concern about it being unsightly, one starts, you know, if it's bending, falling over, you know, those kind of things. Is, is there something we can do to assure that it's, I guess, well-kept or things like that in terms of, is there some kind of, you know, I know sometimes the town has, you know, maintenance agreements, but I don't necessarily know if that really applies to something like this, but, because it's not really a sign or things like that that are up kept, but-
The general property maintenance code would cover that.
Cover that, okay. Perfect.
That's a good question, though. When you, when, what do you do to take this down? Poles come out? Obviously, the net comes down, the poles come out?
The net comes down, I was, well, originally, I was going to not take the poles down, okay? Because it is a daunting task to put this up. However, I've been approached by a couple people, actually, the individual that builds a lot of these stadiums, I think. I put in the letter, he has a space indoor, and he was like, I have, I actually have a space that you can bring this in indoor during the winter time if you would like-
And use it?
And use it all winter. That I'm still weighing that option. So, I would have to have a bunch of my dads from the teams that I coached come over and, you know, help-
Every year, moving.
-you take it down and move it. But I think, you know, that would be the reason why I would take the poles down. Outside of that, I'd probably leave the poles up. I'm, was going to, there's the home plate, separate turf that will be coming out of there. Obviously, that L screen will be coming out of there as well, and that net, just so, you know, things don't get ruined. In terms of upkeep as well, though, I mean, as you can tell, it's looking pretty clean. We, I don't want it to look terrible. I, I, you know, I like to respect my stuff, so I always want it to look as good as it possibly can.
Okay. So, let's, I don't want to cut you off. Anything else you want to add before we ask folks to comment? All right. So, I could be doing this wrong, but I don't see any comments submitted electronically through the website. If somebody, if I'm wrong about that, somebody let me know, and I don't see anybody on the phone.
Correct. No calls and no web submissions at this time.
All right. So, then I'll ask anybody in the audience tonight that cares to speak about this to come on up and give us your name and address, and I guess sit there. Really? Okay. All right. So, let me then get back to you about some of these thoughts and ideas. If, if we were to put a condition of, of approval limiting hours, what would you say would be reasonable hours? And by the way, I, I would understand if you said those hours should differ based upon what month of the year we're in.
Yeah, the sun goes down.
What's the earliest that you would think, knowing that you're asking for a variance, so I always want you to keep that in mind, that would be reasonable for us to say, no batting prior to blank o'clock? And no batting after this time? Regardless of what kind of bat there is, at least at first, but, you know, chime in any way you like.
Sure. I mean, originally, I was thinking sunup to sundown, right? Obviously, that changes, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, it, you know, now, you can't hit after 4:30, right? So, that does change. I would say, for the most part, my kids aren't, we're not in the cage at sunup, okay? The only time that we would ever get in there early would be if the kids had a game, and they do sometimes, when you're playing in a tournament.
Yeah.
And it's an eight o'clock start, let's just say. Or if it's a 10 o'clock start and it's an hour drive, right? They would get in there and take a couple of swings, and we're talking for 10 minutes and done. That's the only time, when it's used early, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what we're talking about for the most part. So, I don't know if I have a really good answer for you or, you know, for a condition in terms of a start time and an end time. I think the end time at sundown, I don't think, there, I, I don't know why that would be too much of an issue.
What's the latest in July or August that the sun goes down? Nine o'clock?
Nine, nine o'clock, 9:30.
Okay. That seems, to me, that seems a little late. Even if it's safe in terms of the kids can see the ball, that seems a little bit late to me, and, and 7:30 in the morning seems a little bit early, to be honest with you. You mentioned a lawnmower. I, I tell you, I don't know if there are rules about when people can start cutting grass.
Seven o'clock.
7:00 AM.
Seven, 7:00 AM.
Construction.
You're saying no.
Nope, not for maintenance of your own property. There are no limits. Now, if somebody was cutting their grass at 3:00 in the morning, we might-
Yeah.
-have to say something.
That's, and I get it, you got a game, you want to warm up before the game, but, you know, that's, that, that does seem a little bit early to me, but, okay. I, you know, I'm just one person up here. But, but it's, it's reasonable, and you've been reasonable about that. So, what about the season? Do you, is, is the middle of October, in your opinion, too restrictive?
It is. My, I mean, my kids were in the cage actually hitting yesterday.
Today?
Not today, but yesterday. I, I have one that's getting shoulder surgery, so he's trying to get as much hitting as he can before he goes on the shelf. But it's going, it's coming down. My plan was to take this down pretty much around the beginning of November, okay? So, keeping it through October and then killing it in November. However, we did have some really nice days coming up.
Sure, yeah.
I went out of town, and my sons assured me that they were going to use it every day, right? So, I'm like, I'm willing to keep it up if you're going to be using it, because I don't want to keep it up for no reason.
Okay.
Now, I'm in a, now, I'm going to be taking it down when it's freezing, so thank you very much.
What, what are the dates on the parking in the road? Do you know? Anybody know? April 1 to middle of November or something?
November something for Paul.
November 15th to April 1st, you're, you're not allowed to park on the road between 2:00 AM and 7:00 AM.
Okay. Yeah, so those dates seem, would seem pretty reasonable as well. Okay. All right. So, if I'm, just to sort of summarize where, where I'm on this, when you're using this for practice, and I'll, and I'll even say to the extent practicable and rely on your good judgment, you know, some language like that, people are going to park in the driveway. I mean, I guess ideally, drop the kids off and go do errands, but, which probably happens most of the time.
They do.
But if cars are going to stay, keep them in your driveway. And then, when they can't be in the driveway, that they park in some safe manner. The hours, I guess, eight, 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 7:30 maybe, if you're going to have some eight o'clock games, 7:30 to, to 8:30 at night seems reasonable to me. But if these guys think I'm being a little bit of a Scrooge, I'm willing to listen to that. And the season, maybe April 1 to November 15th also seems reasonable. How, how long do you think you're going to have this cage?
How long are you guys planning on playing?
10 years, 15 years?
I, let's say 10.
How, how old is he?
He's 10.
Yeah, 10 years, so.
So, 10 years, probably, right?
Living at home till, what, 28?
Don't get me started, please. Okay. Because I'm wondering whether you'd be willing to put a limit on it as well, 10, 12 years. I know, nobody can predict the future, but, you know, I'd ask you and, and these guys to consider that as well. So, that's where I am on restrictions. I think he's done a good job of addressing the situation and the concerns. I don't have any concerns about him keeping his property up or keeping the cage in good working order. I think that's evident that that's going to happen. Done a heck of a, a job of going out and contacting the neighbors and getting a lot of people to sign approval, and I think addressed the concerns of the people that have been opposed to it. You know, there's, the people oppose a lot of things. But I also think that all the concerns that those folks have brought up, we've addressed here, and if I've missed something, you know, let me know. But let me open it up to the rest of you.
I'm okay with those restrictions. Being as I played baseball, I would, my only pushback would be, or only disagreement is I think sunup to sundown is fair.
Yeah.
Because during certain seasons when there's more games and you've got, I've been, I've been in a situation where I played three games in the same day, you, you, you've got to get up early to get the practice in.
So, then I'll ask again, what's the earliest the sun rises in July? 6 o'clock?
Yeah. And personally, I, when I was their age, I practiced at 6:00 AM in the morning prior to games.
What about, what about wood bats before 10:00 AM?
Yeah, that's what I was going to, my, my restriction would be wood bats before 10:00 AM. Seems, seems to sound like that.
Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. How about, how about, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I would have said, you know, sunrise, sunset, but no earlier than 7, no later than 9. It's kind of like, you know, at the, at the extremes, you know?
So if it goes past that, those are kind of your window time periods because usually
by 9 o'clock, you know, if people are wanting to go to bed or things are settling down, that's kind of where I was going. Plus it's dark most of the time by then anyways.
Okay. So what about the season? April 1 to November 15, you think that's, you guys okay with that?
I would, I don't know the season, I would defer to the, to them, but that seems reasonable to me, yeah.
Okay.
When do you actually start your season?
We never stop our season, no, I'm just kidding. Um, not really, but no, the reality is, no, we're not going to be hitting outside prior to April 1.
Right.
It's wet there, you know, that, I mean, it's, we would definitely not be doing that.
Okay, so let me write some of this down.
I think that seems reasonable.
4/1, 11/15. What did we talk about on the hours?
I think the 7 to 9 is reasonable.
And, and 7 to 9, but no metal bats before 10:00 PM?
No, no 10:00 AM.
Yeah.
10:00 PM.
No metal before 10. How about any, any wood bat only at a certain time? Or are we good to go until it's dark with metal bats? I am.
Yeah.
All right.
Probably like, something like no illumination for that way.
Yeah, and that was.
I think that that continued to not have lights as a condition.
And I did have one question that I, we get a chance to, is, I'm assuming there's, there's, you, there's no loud music or anything that would be, would be in conjunction with the batting?
I'm not going to say that they don't probably have a portable speaker that they bring, you know, when they're hitting, you know, I know my sons on occasion have that, but I mean, we're not talking excessive.
Would it, so it would be any louder than when you were having a party with the pool?
No, I have a pretty solid system out there.
Fair enough. That was my only question, Dan.
Are you going to ask what kind of music? Because it's classic rock, I'm fine. Some of the stuff the kids listen to nowadays?
Yeah, in, in defense of the kids, I mean, that's, that's not fair, so.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Let me just ask one more time, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No, and once again, no calls or no emails, which is, which is good. So before I make my motion here, did you have anything else to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, good. You know, I just want to say that this, as simple from a zoning standpoint as this application is, it's not an easy one from a community and neighborhood standpoint. Nonetheless, we have a job to do. We have an applicant that's done a lot of work. We, we talked about the communication with the town, but again, that is what it is, stuff happens, but we've dealt with that, I think. We've had a lot of communication and input from neighbors, not so much tonight, but before tonight. But you, you'll all recall how I started this meeting out by saying, that's what we want. For and against. Sometimes it makes our job more difficult if you have five complaints and five in favor, but that's why we're here, that's part of our job to do. So again, from a zoning standpoint, not a, not a difficult application at all, but from a community and personality and neighborhood standpoint, not an easy one. But I, I commend the applicant for doing a really good job of presenting the case and agreeing to reasonable restrictions. So based upon all that, I, I am going to make a motion to approve with some of the certain conditions that we talked about.
Hey, Dan, we haven't done seeker.
Oh, gosh, that's right, sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. So before we get into the merits of it, yeah, this is, we are required to consider environmental issues as well before we even get into the merits of the application. So thanks, Matt, for pointing that out. So on seeker, I would make a motion to declare it a type 2 action requiring no further environmental review.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then continuing on the merits. So the, the conditions being operated only April 1 through November 15, no, no electricity to be run, do you ever have portable pitching machines, do you? So let, let me just say no permanent electricity going there, you know, they have some of the.
Meeting an extension cord to like hook the thing up.
I think the illumination's more the issue, right?
Yes, yes, and, and, you know, no, no lights. To operate from between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM, but no metal bats before 10 o'clock AM. And then just to go through some of, so anything else? Did I miss anything on that?
No.
Just to go through some of the other findings that we have to make in terms of environmental effects, I don't see any proof whatsoever that there's any adverse environmental effects here. Changing the character of the neighborhood, yes, you can make an argument that it does, but it's being done in an appropriate, reasonable manner. I'm fully confident that based upon the way that their property looks, that they're going to take care of this, it's not going to be falling apart or anything along those lines, which then would add to the argument that it is not, that it is an eyesore. Then is the, is there some fees, other feasible way for you to achieve your purpose short of the variance request? And I think you've gone through, that's one of the reasons I asked you about how much it would cost to move it. Based upon what we've heard in the record, there isn't a feasible way. You have, excuse me, restrictions in the topography of your yard and the house and the pool, so this, it really sort of has to go, if it's going to go at all, it has to go here. And then another factor is, is the condition self-created and absolutely it's self-created, but almost all applications that we have for these things are. What do I mean by that? Well, you don't have to have a batting cage. The fact you want a batting cage is what creates, here is what creates the need for a variance. Once again, I think all of the concerns that have been expressed, noise, traffic, safety.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, please do.
As far as the conditions go, I know there was some discussion about people coming to, for the, for the sole purpose of using.
Oh, parking.
To park in the driveway.
Right, right. If there are going to be cars that are bringing people for the sole purpose of practice or batting, they are to, they are to park in the driveway to the extent possible, and if they cannot for what, because the driveway's full, then they have to park in some safe and reasonable manner. Thank you, Andy, for bringing that one up. So safety, noise, and aesthetics, I think have all been brought up and addressed. Anything else?
I would just note that so many people in, in the neighborhood have expressed support for this, that going back towards the, the changing the character of the neighborhood doesn't, to the extent that it may, it seems that there's so much support that, especially the surrounding, the, the houses in closest proximity to the applicant, that they themselves don't really care.
Very good point.
I think I'd even add that if this was 20 feet off the road farther, I don't think any of the issues brought up would be any different than if they were, you know, whether it's noise or parking or those things, whether it's here or farther from the road in, in the front yard there, I think it would still be the same impacts for those.
Yeah. And the point about the RVs, which are allowed, again, I'll say, is a valid point.
Can I, can I speak to one thing? I also wouldn't even be here if I didn't put crushed stone down.
Right, right.
I wouldn't, this wouldn't have, I wouldn't even have to move it, I wouldn't, you know, I mean.
Yep.
Ultimately, that's what landed me in this spot.
But you want the crushed stone, I mean, it's, it makes it a better.
I know, I understand that, but what I'm, it's kind of a.
Yeah.
If I didn't put that down, they can say it's an eyesore all they want, they could say you're loud and all, and all of these things, and it's in the same spot it was, right? I think that's.
Similar to, to an RV being allowed in the driveway. So, you know, a portable cage, if you will, would, would have been allowed there. So I think that's good. We all sat here?
Yep.
All right, so I, did I get a second? I made a motion to approve.
I didn't get a second.
With those conditions.
Did you talk about commercial use?
No commercial use, yes, is another.
And I'll, I'll second, Dan.
All right, so I made a motion to approve based upon those findings and with those conditions, and George has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, took a while, but thank, thank you everybody that's been involved with this application. Good luck. Happy Thanksgiving to you.
I want the make it handy, Kevin Suster boy.
Big concrete ramp.
You ball a thing here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. All right, number two, please.
John Nurseinger, 8 Sunleaf Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Requests approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a taller fence than permitted under section 250-7.1-D of the code at 8 Sunleaf Drive. The properties currently are formerly owned by John and Carmen Nurseinger and is owned R-1-20, SPL number 109.01-2-136. This is application number 22Z-0056.
All right, if you can give us your name and address for the record, then George will walk you through it.
Yes, good evening. Name is John Nurseinger, 8 Sunleaf Drive, Penfield, New York.
Well, good evening. First and foremost, excellent application, all the detail was there. It's always nice when you can sit down and read all of the information clearly delineated and outlined. I do, do note that you're looking to put a four-foot fence in the rear of your yard, and due to the location of the, of the, of the property, it is technically up against a road, therefore the limitation would be three feet, so you're asking for the fence to be slightly taller. Could you walk me through a little bit the, the need for the fence and what you've done so far based on the approvals that you've gotten?
Certainly. Well, we purchased the property in, in June, and there was no one living in that house when we purchased it, it was a state sale, so the, the backyard was in rough shape. So I had probably in the area of 70 boulders removed, I had probably 14 dead or dying trees removed, had Clover Landscape come in with, to date, spent over 20, 25 yards of dirt and regraded the backyard, completed the patio. The property now is, you know, it's very in good shape, you know, I mean, cutting the grass, before they couldn't cut the grass because of the stumps and everything else. And now to finally get to utilize that backyard for my pets, I have, I have my dog and my daughter's dog. You know, we want a fenced-in yard. I mean, they're both rescue dogs, they grew up with fenced-in yards, they can't figure out why they're on leashes now, but they're on leashes because of 5 Mile Line Road, it's a busy road. And so, and that picture was taken while they were doing phase one of the rough, of the grading. So at that point, the trees are removed. That burn in this picture is now gone, that's been leveled. They also took down trees that were, were for the future of sidewalks that are going in, they removed those trees, so that there's clear sailing now for the sidewalks. I did work with Mark Valentine in the town regarding the placement of the fence with the sidewalk easement in place. I also achieved, got a letter from RG&E for the, the RG&E variance.
Yep.
That there's nothing there, it's just, you know, it was, it was state, it was Safe Dig or whatever came out and, and went through the property, and then RG&E actually sent us a letter, sent me a letter saying that, yes, there's, there's no concerns with digging there or putting a fence there or anything else. They do have a pretty wide easement there. What else? Everything's been surveyed, pins are in the ground, and there's also flags supporting the pin, you know, by the pins, so when the placement of the fence comes in, it's going to be 10 feet inside my property line. And my property line is 15 feet off the edge of the road. So that'd be a total of 25 feet from the road, obviously.
Yep, understood. And I did note that you did, you did in advance get the variance from both the town and RG&E, so.
Yep.
Very good. And obviously it makes sense that you'd want a fence in the, the, I guess my other question is, is there reason why you couldn't use the, the allowed three foot versus the four foot?
Three-foot fence? It just wouldn't be tall enough for the dogs. They, yeah. And, and then the other thing aesthetically, the neighbor to the north of me already has a four-foot fence up, and we're going to be tie, you know, kind of tying into his fence, not physically tying into it, but putting it next to it.
Yep, no, that, that makes sense.
Previous owners of this house had a six-foot stockade fence that stopped short of the property line going towards 5 Mile Line Road. And there'll be, so that this new fence will also connect to that one, you know, phys, not physically, but as close as possible to keep the dogs in. And that's really, we just want to be able to use the yard, put a lot of money into it to make it, you know, a nice place to enjoy the summer and be safe for the pets. We like to let them out, let them run and get their exercise, so.
No, well, that makes perfect sense to me. I don't really have any additional questions, Dan. I mean, it was fairly thorough, and he's explained why he's the fence, anybody else?
I've got one, but more for Andy. Normally we see applications for fence heights on the front yards, three foot, because it's within the 30-foot. This is the first one I've ever seen that's in the backyard. What, I guess what triggers this all of a sudden that now, because I mean, we've never had one for, for a backyard, and for all intensive purposes, this is identified as the rear of the yard. What triggers the three foot here and not anywhere else in the backyard?
Well, the way that our code is written, whether that be good or bad, it, the restriction on the height of fencing is limited within 20 feet of what the code defines as a front property line, and a front property line for those purposes defined as any property line adjacent to a right-of-way. So even if it's a rear property line, upside, front, if it's adjacent to a right-of-way, that's when that rule applies.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Does it, does that mean it's possible to have two front and two backyards?
For the purpose of fencing, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, and to be perfectly honest, you know, I've been, I've had a few houses, and I never would have thought to consider that aspect of my backyard being considered frontage, because I understand the issue with, when you pass the front, front piece of your house, you can't be over three feet. And, but Andy explained it to me, and.
Yeah, don't feel bad, I had to read the code twice because I had the same question that you did. And, and still, your explanation was much clearer than me trying to read through the minutia, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was, it was an education for me to.
So, Dan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anybody submitted any electronic comments or questions, nor is anybody on the phone from what I can tell. Anyone in the audience? Boy, excuse me, anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? All right, so go ahead, George, with the environmental first.
Well, yeah, and this, I would, I would, I would say this is a type 2 request pursuant to seeker and requiring no further action.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a seeker motion by George and a second by Andres, type 2 action, all those in favor?
Aye.
On the merits now?
Yes, so he's done a fantastic job in, in filling out the application. He clearly got all of the, all of the additional documentation from RG&E and the town that he needed for the variances, and it's a reasonable request for him to be able to attach one four-foot fence to an already existing four-foot fence to, to ensure the health and welfare of his animals and to facilitate ease of use of his property. So he's, he's done a, a very thorough job, to be, to be fair, with the frontage that he's got in his backyard, but also to, to, to meet the requirement. So I would, I would definitely recommend approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. I agree with everything you said, by the way. Any further discussion?
I make one more note, this, you know, what's also unique here is there's no driveway entering the highway here in terms of sightline issues where you're worried about, you know, a car pulling out and not being able to see, not being able to see pedestrians walking, things like that, where typically on the front, as we consider for most homes, that is an issue, where that's one of the concerns, is sightlines for cars, vehicles, pedestrians kind of interacting with each other.
Yes, that was explained to me, and there's no driveways within probably a half mile.
Ways, yes.
Yeah, so.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Everybody have a nice holiday and.
You too, thank you.
Number three.
Alan Schechter, 41 Pebble Hill Road, Fairport, New York, 14450. Requests approval for a conditional use under section 250-13.3 and section 250-5.7-C1K of the code to allow the operation of an immersive art experience business at 1601 Penfield Road. The properties currently are formerly owned by Penfield TK Owner LLC and is owned general business. SPL number 138.08-1-2-point forward slash PLZA. This is application number 22Z-0057.
Anybody here on this application?
There was, Alan, I believe, was on Zoom, and he just signed off, he said he was in an airport, and he had to board, he left the Zoom meeting.
Are we, so, are you here on this application?
Yeah, I'm representative of the landlord, but I'm not the applicant.
Yeah, can, do you think you can speak? I mean, we got it written, if you could just maybe speak to it, I think we're ready to move forward, is what I'm telling you.
Sure.
Yeah. What the heck, right?
We're happy to.
By the way, did he say that he had a board or that he was bored?
It spelled the same, so that's a-
Well, I don't know.
He was out of the country. I'm not sure where, but-
And by the way, if at any time during the next few minutes you say, oh geez, you know, timeout, I'm not-
Yeah, if I can't, if I'm not qualified to answer, I will not.
Right.
Michael Smith, leasing director for LLD Enterprises, which is the managing partner and also property manager for the shopping center Panorama Plaza, which is where this applicant is proposing this, this business.
So would you use your, would you use your address as 1601 Penfield Road?
Microphones, please.
Oh, jeez. Oh, man.
Would you use your address as 1601?
No. My address is 415 Park Avenue.
Then just put it off.
That's Rochester.
Good evening, sir. I hope I can ask all questions and know the answer to-
Sure.
Or you know the answer to, but I guess one of the biggest questions I have is the Van Gogh Experience-
Yes.
-was big in Rochester, and it sounds like that this is similar to what they're looking to put in here with different forms of art.
It is.
Do you know what they're, is this something that's going to be, I guess, stationary and it's always going to be the same, or is it going to be fluid and it's going to be changing on occasion?
I believe there will be changeable art exhibits within the experience, but for the most part, I think some of the larger installations, for instance, this was, this is proposing, proposed to be astronomy, astronomy and nature, outer space, extraterrestrials. He's building a full-size entrance to a flying saucer. So it's, but he also has exhibits coming from across the country that will be coming in and out, but probably not on a regular basis.
Is it going to be videos? Is it going to be?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know, so I, for instance, one of the things that I'm concerned about in reading this, and I'm assuming this is not going to be the case, but the code sets forth permitted uses, and a theater is permitted, but a drive-in theater is not.
Right.
So my presumption is that there's going to be no drive-in capabilities here.
Correct, yeah, no, pedestrian traffic only.
What about pornographic videos or something of that nature?
Nothing adult nature. This is a family-oriented experience.
And I'm assuming that you have a lease with, with a tenant?
We're at letter of intent stage.
Okay. And are things like that going to be put into the lease?
Always in our leases, yes. Every lease at Panorama Plaza has restrictive covenants, specific uses that cannot be used in the shopping center. Pornographic materials being, adult bookstores being one.
Do you know the hours of operation that they're going to undertake?
I don't know specifically, but I think if, kind of thinking in line of most other exhibits I've experienced, you're probably, you know, I highly doubt it'd be open before noon, and, you know, probably till nine, 10 o'clock at night, which is typical hours for the shopping center.
As a landlord, do you have any concerns with the, I know it's a big parking lot. Do you have any concerns with the amount of parking and the availability of the parking for both employees?
Yeah, we don't, no.
Yeah, there's going to be, it's a large parking lot.
Yeah, it is.
Plenty of parking there. Especially at that end, it's got the deeper field because of Tops. Andy, where are we with the New York State Building and Fire Code inspections and the compliance of that?
We're still waiting on a more detailed set of plans so that we can review those and make those determinations.
Okay. So I'm thinking that any approval that we give would be conditioned upon them being in compliance and passing any inspections related to New York State Building and Fire Codes?
Yeah, I believe he will be submitting a fairly detailed floor plan of the exhibits and the actual experience, which is a combination of three different spaces.
I noticed that, yeah. Yeah. Are they going to all sort of, I think aesthetically, be merged into one?
Correct. 10,525 square feet total between the three units. One is the former Sears hometown, one is the former Just Games, who moved into a larger spot next to Tops, and then the last spot would be the former GameStop.
Do you know how many employees they intend to have at any given time?
I don't, but, you know, I think, I know it's himself, some other artists, probably administration, ticket takers. I don't know that it'll be, I think it's self-guided, like most of these experiences are. You know, if he had more than six to 10 employees at a given time there, I'd be surprised. But he'd be a better answer to that.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Anybody else from the board have any questions? I don't think so.
No, I'm good. I think that a two condi, oh, you asked the audience for participation, and-
Right. I don't see any, anybody on the phone or, let's see. Well, nobody on the phone from, according to this, or electronics submissions. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this application? The answer there is no, so go ahead, Matt.
So I think three conditions I'm not, that I'll, I'm ultimately, once we get past seeker, going to move to approve this. Actually, why don't we just do seeker now and get that over with? I would make a motion to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further review.
Okay, Andres will second that. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'm going to move to approve this with three conditions, the first being that there's compliance with New York State Building Code and Fire Code, and they pass all requisite inspections. The second is that there's no outdoor component to this, as far as the museum is concerned, and everything's contained within. And then the third, and I know it's part of the lease, and that frankly makes me feel more comfortable, but that there's no adult entertainment component to this, that it's, I don't think it needs to be family-friendly, but that it, that abides by the code as it relates to, or to the town code as it relates to adult entertainment. So I would make a motion to approve this application with those conditions.
Well, is there, I'm sorry to do this, but are there any, will there be any limitations in the lease about hours of operation?
Once again, all of the shopping center leases at Panorama do have a specific clause, says till 10 o'clock. I think it's 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
That's fine.
I'm fine with that. That's often adjusted depending on the use, Panorama.
But not expanded, or?
Correct, yes. If someone had requested us to go to like 11 o'clock, I mean, Tops is open, depending on the use and the nature of the use, we would consider it, but in this particular case, I don't think he's past 10 o'clock anyway, so.
All right.
I'm okay with it.
All right, good.
I'll second it, if no one else did.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve with the conditions stated and, by Matt, and a second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for stepping in.
Oh, no problem. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. The fourth one is withdrawn. What, you don't know? Okay.
Don't know.
All right. And so number five, Skidmore Lane-
Ski Moore.
Skidmore Lane, with the-
Classic rock.
-massive variance request here. Whoever's here on that one, come on up. Oh, God, you got to read it into the record, yeah, okay. Been a long day, folks.
James DeBella, 5 Ski Moore Lane, Penfield, New York, 14526.
I get it now.
Requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an existing storage building with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 5 Ski Moore Lane. The property is currently or formerly owned by James and Nancy DeBella and is owned RR-1, SBL number 140.02-1-2.1. This is application number 22Z-0059.
Someone's on Zoom.
All right. If we could have your name and address and-
Hi, Alexandra DeBella, 5 Ski Moore Lane, Penfield. I'm here on behalf of my in-laws. They're actually on Zoom. They are out of town on business.
So you drew the short straw?
No.
I'm up in casey technology.
Great.
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you. Well done on the application. Appreciate the extra survey information in terms of the variations and how that can be spelled out and interpreted differently, depending on how surveys are done. Let me just go through a few points. There's currently a structure on the property that's going to be subdivided. It's been there for about 15 years. That property line that it sits on is already an existing property line with another neighbor that's not part of the subdivision, I guess, in a sense.
Correct.
That structure was built, let's see, 15 years ago, and it looks like it's based on the worst-case scenario for a survey is four inches.
And .3 square feet is-
And .3 square feet.
Too close.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's small. And then the other survey said it was closer to maybe two inches or even less, depending on the interpretations.
Worst-case scenario, we're looking for a four-inch variance, please.
Four inches, okay. Basically, the reason I see right here is the property tapers, and the barn is not parallel with that property line. Back in the day, it was probably built, that fence post or the rebar that's bent currently could have been over four inches farther one way or the other, and here we are today because surveying's got a whole lot more accurate. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No. No.
No E-participation.
Jeez, really?
Yeah. Believe that. I really thought people would be lined up.
I thought that's what all the calls-
No phone calls as well.
I thought that's what everybody else here was here. That's what I thought, too.
All right. So let's go to the, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay, let's go to the seeker.
Okay, seeker. I'm going to, this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then I'm going to move that we approve this variance. It's a pre-existing structure that was there. The subdivision of the property lines will not impact where it sits right now. It's already against an existing property line. It's been there for 15 years. Changing the properties, you know, from one lot to two lots isn't going to affect this at all. It's .32 square feet, which is extremely small, it's probably one of the smallest variances that we've seen in a long time.
Or ever.
Yeah, or ever, or ever. And there's going to be no ever, you know, impacts for the neighborhood because it's already existing. Nothing's going to change with the subdivision of this property for this variance, so it's going to look exactly as it looked before.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You know, I have a buddy that built a ski pond, is that what we call these, down in North Carolina? And I just was talking to him the other day, and I sent a Google picture of this, and he was really impressed with it.
Yeah, my in-laws are-
He's from here, but he lives in Florida now and has a place in Carolina as well. I think he said this was 200 feet across and maybe, maybe 2,500 feet long. How long is that one?
He could, my father-in-law could-
Oh.
Yeah, he'll say.
250.
There you go.
Yeah, okay, so it's really, well, it's good, good. Well, it's good that you use it. He uses, he told me he's going to get me down to North Carolina and do some barefooting. I told him that's very unlikely that that's going to happen. So anyways, good seeing you, kind of. We can't really see the folks on Zoom, but happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Enjoy, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye. That was it. So the other two applications are continued table. Good job tonight, everybody, and we'll call it quits. Thank you very much. Have a good night.